The May 12th meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors is called to order. Can we have someone up this way?
I think you should ask Charlie.
Charlie go.
Charlie.
I don't want to put him on his phone. Your principal said you could.
It would be honored to do it.
Do you have your mind up?
We don't really have a choice, Charlie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, please call the board.
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Dugan.
Chief Director.
Director Hart. Director Honchar.
Here.
Director Rosa.
Here.
Director Ryan.
Here.
Director Shaw. Director Zalinski.
Here.
Here. There's a portion of the meeting at the beginning where we allow the members of the public to comment on any intended items in our meeting for the night. If anyone in public have any comments on the 15 minutes. Hearing none, we'll move on. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2016 meeting as presented by such a motion. So move by a second. Second, if any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I think I have two or three seconds.
One extension.
Yes.
Two extensions, people that weren't up here. I'll report that we had an executive session.
There's no conflict of interest in this one.
I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel issues and real estate issues. And one quick note, I apologize for our late start. We had a lot to talk about, so I apologize too. Dr. Pleiser.
Thank you. I should say it's, you know, you're all the hell of a special meeting today. I want to thank the board, thank the public for making adjustments. Frankly, for me, because I'm going to the superintendent's academy on Sunday, over here, Sunday 15th, 16th, 17th. Academy's being held through the official's poverty. Now, while there are hundreds of dependents participating in the course, 25. From our region, anywhere's pretending to Steel Valley's going, or to the last school in Plum. Any tennis, it's a two-year study group, and we'll bring some things back. Not only train our administrators and our staff with, but also to apply to help our kids and help them evolve some growth and academic progress for some of the kids who may be struggling in poverty. So I want to thank the board for meeting tonight and making that concession. But I think it's a good opportunity for us to be able to get some things in and try to help sort of these kids. Since you went last time, you know, I know the building principals and it's your main vision of faculty, you're really putting in the best effort for us with testing. We've got testing coming up this week, or I guess, I guess next weekend, right?
Next week?
Next week. So I don't want to, I don't want to hit on that always, but. Because testing ever since then, when we get to the spring, and then we've got the prom coming up at the high school, some street concerts. You know, we're all wrapping things up, plenty of things for next year we're scheduling. We're excited about some of the courses we're going to offer at the secondary level. And, you know, Mr. Burleson, I know you're working hard to get some grants, get some funds for some new education. So trying to look at building what we have, maybe better for this. So having said that, I'd like to turn it over to.
Yeah.
Let's go back to the.
Thank you. We have a couple of important dates coming up on the 19th. It's our band concert on the 24th. It's our choral concert here at the high school. And the prom is the 27th. Come to the prom, the prom day starts at six o'clock here is always a wonderful event to come and see the kids. We're preparing again for our Keystone tests. And since our last meeting, Mr. Manages presented some great ideas for focusing on math and a little more smart at the high school, finding our curriculum and teaching practices to meet the, meet the needs of kids and the requirements of the PS to say in Keystone terms. I don't have anything else to report, just that.
We have had busy weeks working on lots of projects. Tomorrow, we're going to celebrate Remake Learning Week. That's something that they designated this whole week for, practice will be tomorrow. Our focus is nature brought, getting students outdoors for Remake Learning. We're going to focus on it, I think where the garden is in the back area. Each grade level has been buddied up with this younger grade level. They're going to create different things. Wine break, one group is doing like bird feeders. One group is going to make a solar pizza box oven. One group is doing popcorn and fairy balloon. A lot of it's to decorate the garden, but also be there for any typical animals. So it won't just kind of rot away. So the teachers this week have been working hard for that tomorrow. And then Saturday is our cultural day. Anyone interested, invite on the back of the orange packet. It's Saturday from 11 to 1:00, and the staff members have also been working very hard on this. Each grade level has been assigned a different area, focusing on a country. They've created presentations either through technology like Power Plus Prezi or Trifold Board. Parents are hoping to me a stations are bringing in, some are bringing in food to represent the different cultures. So that has been very busy time, and we'll get to celebrate that on Saturday if you are free. And then just a lot of night events, some concerts coming up, and a happy calendar for spring, or band concerts, or chorus concerts. I think that's about it. Just to thank our PTA, just did a wonderful job last week for our teacher appreciation week. They did a great job with teachers laughing from breakfast to a luncheon, to just different gifts. It really kind of brings up that busy, very overwhelming end of the year week. So we appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Chris.
Just one thing.
Yes.
So in the call time here, just a couple of questions. We're going to have to celebrate, we're going to celebrate the end of the year. And then tomorrow is their cultural day. So we're going to come at seven, starting at one o'clock, from one to three.
Last week, we opened bids for athletic supplies. We're in the process of reviewing that. We can turn it over to the athletic director. And it'll be presented for the board to approve at the second meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Just why anything's up for the spring sports? Everything's done here, all the home games are done. Getting, walking through all the buildings, and give it the principals next week. Get their plans for all the summer projects that we're going to accomplish by the staff here. Was that Parkway today? Got to take a look at the ticket booths. One's 95% completed, the other one's probably about 80% completed. They look really nice, I think they're going to be a nice addition over there. And met with the LED light people, they poured the stadium over there. They're looking at, looking at the lighting over there, see what they could do for us over there. And basically, just, you know, winding the year down, getting everything ready for summer work.
Do you have any expected installation times with either of the candidates?
No. No. I'm trying to get nailed down pricing for the parking lot over there. KPN Network that worked with me on the curbs, they've kind of dropped the ball on the bids for the paving. So now, we probably got to end up advertising that out. So I've gathered up the spec, in the spec, to advertise that. So I'll pave that lot first and then put the booths in.
So are the LED lights something that you're thinking about for next season? Or is this just kind of preliminary?
Just preliminary, just seeing, you know, the cost of them and, you know, what the return on our investment would be.
Right.
Just inquire, you know, but look at, look at all that stuff for us. They look like this gym over at Carnegie, too. Because it's got the old lights over there. That gym's lit up so much by the windows. We don't, we don't need them over there. Just investigating it all for us.
Thank you. Scott.
We're kind of getting close to the end of the school year, so we're starting to run down inventory levels. But we're trying to make sure that we don't run out of any products. Still have all the same offers, offerings. And starting cleaning projects to get our kitchen closed down for the summer. And also, Airmark's been working with our suppliers quite a bit. We've been a lot of chronic recalls. We haven't been affected by anything. But we're constantly checking our inventory, making sure none of the products were on the list. So nothing we've had so far has been recalled, so.
Scott, I have a question.
Yeah.
With the problems with lettuce and so forth in some of the restaurants, how do you make sure that the, the greens are really complete?
Um, we, we get in the pre-washed product that's already processed, it's chopped, cut, washed, and vacuumed. And then Airmark also has like pricing agreements with the vendors. So that when tomatoes say go. Go skyrocketing, we actually pay maximum for those.
Well, like the problem is probably with the people getting sick.
Yes. And then for, for illness, we actually moved if there's like a stomach virus, like where they're having upset stomach or diarrhea, they're off for two days to make sure that they're not transferring anything to students or to each other. And then if there's any illness that they have, they're supposed to report it to me immediately.
Scott, did you take the extensive training, whether it's on the health guidelines, the food sanitation, how to handle food and temperature and so.
We actually, I plan on doing a training this summer for everyone and getting everyone recertified with the Surf Safe training. Out of a re-pressure. So a couple of people are starting to get expired.
Right.
Just continuing work on the new student information system. As of today, almost all of our data except for medical has been uploaded and verified. Still a few corrections we need to make, re-upload some things, and go back to some historical stuff. Everything for like the last year or two is good. But we need to go back and make sure that years prior are all in there, all correct. So we're continuing to work on that. Next week, we have training for, I think, ended century discipline. We have teacher training for the teacher trainers. I think some more verification, I think medical verification at the end of the week. So happy with the progress, we're doing pretty good with that, I think. The new provider for our wins through the Allegheny Connect Network, they just finished, I think today, pulling all the fiber they had to dig out from the street entrenched behind the building to bring it in. So they're not in the building yet, but they'll be coming in for the next week or two. So that'll be July 1, go live with the new, with the new provider for our internet services. We're really just trying to get ready for the summer, just starting to play on stuff and starting to get some stuff together. All the software updates and stuff like that, trying to prepare them and test them out now. So they're ready to go once, you know, once school starts, or once school lets out. That's about it.
Right, the new provider, are we able to see some cost savings with that?
Yeah, I'll give you the numbers, but I mean, I think it's over 50% cost savings from what we've been paying, so it's a significant cost savings to the business. Yeah, I think it's over 50%, I can't, can't call it exact numbers. So I'll have some more, I think next Thursday, we're meeting with the, all, all the members of Allegheny Connect are, are meeting with the provider to go over like the last, next couple of weeks, what's going to happen. Now we're going to transfer IP addresses, DNS settings and stuff like that. So want some better information for your next meeting.
So there might be a short period of service interruption, we might want everyone to know.
There may be, you know, I think it's going to go pretty smoothly, but there, there may be a little, a few things that don't work as planned. Like I said, that is July 1. We may play in some testing periods before that, but we should be, as long as everything's up and running. So we should be able to test it out prior, like off, off hours and stuff like that. So I think, I think we'll be okay with that. Yeah, once I get all the things finalized, I'll let everybody know.
Do you need help in that code or do you have?
Uh, yeah, I'll probably use our, the people we've been dealing with for our network services to make sure that they're there, have an idea of what, you know, what's going on. But I'd rather somebody there looking out or make sure I don't miss anything.
I'd like to touch base, use a vantage on Keystone's. Thank you. We're going to be starting the Keystone exams on Monday. We did something a little different than we've done the past few years. And we're going to run the schedule where we're going to have one module a day for six days as opposed to having, you know, two modules a day for the one day. And that's going to put us in a schedule where we're going to do a two-hour delay for the students who are not testing on those days. And the first bus run, we're going to have the students coming in who are testing. So that we work 7:30 for the testing, we run it to 9:30. And then the two-hour delay schedule, pick up and have point forward. Everybody else will have the, they're ready for school day. So we're going to do the biology on Monday and Tuesday. We're going to do algebra on Wednesday and Thursday. And we're going to do literature on Friday and Monday of the following week. So hopefully the one module a day will help with the, to help the students perform as by on that. So that's kind of, we're going to be at it for the next, next week perhaps.
And I applaud the creative approach to the testing periods. It's something different, I don't think we did it by way of the past. So I'd love to see maybe in a couple of months, you come back and tell us what you think the results were. I know it's going to be a bit of a hassle for students, for teachers, for parents with that delay, but I might end up hanging off some materials.
Thank you. To our administrative.
Any other questions for any of the administrators? Moving on to the main portion of the meeting, I'll entertain a motion under our miscellaneous section for two items. Number one, the additions to the 2015-2016 conference and field trip requests as submitted. And number two, the memorandum of understanding between the district and the Carlington Federation of Teachers regarding district school psychologist Rebecca Sawchik and Tricia Suri as submitted. Do I have such a motion? Do I have a second? Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, we vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Under finance, we have five items. Let's do a motion for the first two items. I'll entertain a motion for number one, treasures report for the month of April 2016 as submitted. And number two, the April 2016 bill in the amount of $2,6,904.37 as submitted. Do I have such a motion?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move the second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'll entertain. I'll entertain, pardon me for a second. We're going to amend the dollar figure in item number three before we go on the second. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve number three. The 2016-2017 proposed final budget in the amount of $27,333,307. Two, seven, three, 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 oh, seven. With a millage rate of 21.564. The proposed final budget will be advertised for a period of 30 days prior to the adoption of the final budget. Do I have motion for item number three?
So move it.
Do I have a second? Seconded, any discussion?
Before you vote, I just want to point out for the record, you're not setting millage tonight, nor is your proposed final budget final. The millage will be set at the June meeting and the amount of the budget could go up or down depending upon the board's feelings at that time. Just want to make sure everybody understands that you're not setting millage.
So you're likely millage.
To support that budget, that's what the millage will be.
Will be finalized.
That'll be final.
Any other comments or questions? Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion for numbers four and five. The renewal, number four, the renewal year cost reimbursable contract between district and Airmark Educational Services for food service management. Effective July 1st, 2016, through July 30th, 2017, as submitted. And number five, proposal between the district and the Western Area YMCA to trade even accounting time with Carlington Junior Senior High School for use at the softball field on Sundays in exchange for the same time of tennis court time or turf time at the Western Area YMCA facilities. The YMCA will credit Carlington accounts for YMCA field usage in exchange for tennis or turf time.
Yep.
Do I have a motion for items four and five? Move by a second? Seconded, any discussion on items four and five?
I just noticed for the fourth, it should be actually July 1st, 2016. Should it be June?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think it was back in the other.
We amend the motion as Director Sheldon. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote on the amended motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Um, under personnel, we have six items. We have five items, items two through six. I'll entertain a motion to approve item number two, the addition to the day-to-day substitute list as submitted. Number three, Michael Schneider locker to the supplemental athletic position of 2015-2016 junior high head swim coach. I don't want to retroactive my policies.
Yeah, for junior high coaches, because he's been assisting now and moving forward.
So it's correct as, as I think. Sorry, 2015-2016 junior high head swim coach and the 2016-2017 varsity swim coach. Number three, the realignment of staff for 2016-2017 school year as a result of a bid meeting to reflect the following assignments. Amy Rinn, grade one, Crafton Elementary. Marissa Whisser, grade. Maria Whisser, grade six, Crafton Elementary. Renee Ganos, grade five, Carnegie Elementary. Anne Marie Bunch, emotional support, junior senior high school. Brenda Vu, grade three, Crafton Elementary. And Allison Fekety, grade one, Carnegie Elementary. Number five, to open the position of autistic support at Carnegie Elementary due to a realignment of positions. And number six, the addition of Timothy Amos to the 2015-2016 day-to-day substitute list as recommended. Do I have a motion for those five items, numbers two through six?
So move.
Move by a second? Move the second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now have three items under policies. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following three items. Number one, the first reading of policy number 823, use of.
Malaxel.
Malaxela?
Narcan and Alexin.
Alexin. Use of Malikson Narcan as submitted. Number two, the first reading of policy number 427, fully use of electronic devices. And number three, the first reading of policy number 8.5.2 website. Do I have a motion for those three items? Move by a second? Move the second, any discussion? I have a comment about the electronic use policy. We talked about this a couple of times in the past. I'm pleased that we have a policy, draft policy out there that we talked about. I do have some concerns about balancing proper guidelines and restrictions that we're going to put on electronic device use and restricting the flow of communication, the very positive flow of communication that we have between students and our staff. So I'll ask the principals, if either of you had a chance to look at this latest copy, how are you and your peers 100% comfortable with it? Or if there's still some language massaging that we might need to do before the final version.
Yeah, I haven't got a chance to look.
And looking at it, I think the one element that Troy put forward is make the parents aware and having some sort of awareness. And most districts where it's, it's easy to say, you know, we shouldn't be text messaging, we shouldn't be communicating coaches. And with, you know, quick cancellations, it's weather. And, and when you're on a field trip and you have kids, that's the means of communication to find and gather people together. And putting a policy, and I think it's important, we let parents know that if we're doing that, that it will be not so. In many districts, join the basketball team, and the first thing they said is, you know, we're going to communicate times and dates. We say what's going to be communicated through those text messages. So I think that constructing those, I think that that is something that could balance those things and say, but we don't say, we, we don't have anybody texting. Because it's an important tool to use in those cases.
Well, and that's, and again, emphasize that's why this is the first reading.
Right.
Is get it out there, get some language.
That's the feedback, that's the feedback that I have in relation to that.
So as the board, anyone can weigh in, but there might be sections of this policy that we all agree on, including the staff, that we want to implement immediately. Like the other sections of it, we feel we want to add, like maybe the language isn't quite right, or we want to try it first, or what's everyone's appetite for, or if their opinion on, or see. I think it's important to have a policy. I think this is a great first step. Thank you very much for pushing this. We just want to get it right, and we don't want to restrict that very positive communication.
I, I suggest, if you have suggestions for additional layers, we can certainly send them to you. I am turning. send them to me, I in turn can send them or solicitor to review, and we can have them for the second reading thirty days from now.
I'm sorry, sorry. If the crossroads are for the athletic, is there a, a tour speed that everybody's following?
And, and we, we should have that in the app where we're using the official channel to send things out, so any announcement of canceled game, or we've got to go out, can get, can get sent through, goes out to everybody. Sure is, everybody, parents and children and athletes are getting the same message at the same time, and it's not a string of individual messages, and I think that's a way to improve communication.
And that would, that would take, I think, the role of the teaching, the last one to be, but very often everybody else, and you can't communicate sometimes, you should just have miscommunication. In case that doesn't work.
Okay.
And so maybe that, I, I mean, maybe, maybe something like that, show someone's phone is working, and the message, and they just, you have to, like, I don't know. But because, because that aspect of it, that immediacy is so important, and like, if you're, and as well as on a field trip, if you have a, a, a Chicago, a medical Chicago, whatever, like, it's like, they, 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 they know what they're saying, like, I don't remember sort of the brainstorm. I don't want social media at all, so.
Well, like, like I said, Margaret, if, if any suggested changes, you know, to, to working document, I can add that in, get that back for a second reading.
Is that something that's affordable for these teachers?
My, my concern with policy is that, right, the same with website policies, we don't have any, an asset that can move on, I, I want to protect our students, I want to protect our staff, and I think in the absence of stuff, it's, it's like the Wild West. So to have that down, to get that language, and if you're talking, or consulting, Joe Liddell, who's worked with us, and even talking homework, and sitting with you, you see, you go, we need to have something that everybody has access to, that everybody can use, and that, so. Point is, protect people that are not, uh, hindered, uh, or not to have, you know, individual discussions, where some people are getting some message, or some people be restricted, or whatever it is. So I think this policy will help with that, and I welcome any revisions that can get sent to me.
I just see what, what it would be completely.
That's right.
We can give suggestions for that.
This area that I'm thinking of is if a student is having trouble with homework at ten o'clock at night, texts their English or math or science teacher, says, hey, I'm having a problem with this concept. Is the teacher allowed to respond to that? What is, what's the appropriate path? An email may not be checked constantly, whereas a cellphone culturally tends to be more frequent.
But they shouldn't, they shouldn't be using a personal cellphone at, at that point.
What if this, this, what if the student, that's the method that the student uses, are we saying that they shouldn't respond?
That's why I, I would have to have a policy out.
How does a student get the teacher's phone up?
Right.
I think we're all agree that, that we don't have a beautiful number.
And I think, once we get the elements in place, the, the channel will be, I think we more communication channels now than, than.
We, we do, but the predominant method of communication today is via cell, sort of the accepted social war. I, I don't want to see us, hopefully we restrict that.
It's a balance, but integrating these technologies probably, I don't know, just should be part of the, I feel like, we're barely guessing, I don't know, so is that really, or, but things like personal cell phone, minors, I mean, that makes it, not say it's traditional, I think teachers would do that, but I don't know, do teachers want to be bothered at ten o'clock at night over?
I think that what we have, I'm just speaking to, and I know that, and, just, we have eleven teachers that are here in the community, that live in the community. We have study sessions in people's homes, and we have kids that are in high school, that are board members, teachers' kids in high school that are participating in these things, and if there's a policy that says there's no communication, where's the definitive line between something and is your daughter, she's participating in the study session, and someone didn't get, right? I mean, those are, those are question, so I think that's.
It's like device policy.
That's, that's.
That's not the only, the only boundary policy that's on people for now.
But his point is, can, can, a text on that situation would not be allowed by his policy today.
I, I, I don't, that's true, that one is.
If my daughter is at a teacher's house for the study day, and I text the teacher, because I know the teacher personally, and I say, can you?
But I think, but I think we language, we're in personal relationships, criticals.
Okay, so, like, there's, there's gray areas here that we don't want to restrict, we want to be careful about.
Well, and I think that's why we're, we're, we're supposed to review it, or get additional amendment language, and send those to me, because what I want to have, we want to have, again, to protect our staff, to protect our students, which right now we have nothing that's important, nothing. And that can be a disaster waiting to happen.
And also what we get, we might have to change, perhaps, not completely, but then I don't want to have it, or whatever, we need to change.
And there is that tool that you were changing, I believe, or they were changing, but there is a tool, and I'd love to hear about how that tool might work, the team communications, where you can use cell phones, but it's, it's a central repository that can.
Apparently, it's apparently.
So, yeah, I'd like to hear how that works, that might solve, maybe.
I have, I have a question for Bill and for Brian. It's my understanding that if you tweet, after a certain period of time, it disappears. Is that right?
No.
Or something disappears. I'm wondering for Bill, don't we?
I don't even know how to spell tweet.
Should the communication be something that was, so that it's.
Yes, I think that should be addressed, but. You know, if, if somebody, what is it, versus Snapchats, and it's gone, I've got no way to, all the Snapchat, whatever, you know.
It's not a decision yet, we wouldn't be using Snapchat.
Right, and this far, this is for efficient communication, and then the others, all we're talking about, that's the relationship, that's the boundary, right? So this, I mean, we should, everyone, where, where, count that, like, you know, our, or like, or like, but like, teachers really need to stand, having, you know, it all depends on, depends on the student. So when I, when a teacher is communicating with me about my kid as a parent, that's different, I mean, do we need to work with the word student in your, in your archive? It should encompass school related stuff, not parent related, you're in my carpool, I've got your kid, you know, that kind of thing. But, I mean, it turns on the meaning of words, I think. And if we try to make some things okay, but some not, then we're regulating content, and you can't regulate content, because you don't know, you make a list of what's appropriate and what's not appropriate, and you forget the one thing, and then you buy the one thing. And, I mean, regulating content is too difficult, I think we need to work on the relationships we're talking about versus the.
So back to your point, have you guys said to you?
Yes.
You ready for the second reading?
For a second, thirty days from now.
I do have one, um, what I, like, we are talking about marketing, and we use it, we say, but, um, what do we do currently, since this policy is not given?
Well, we, we've had it since the, in Holly, you say, in our high school, we only have it at the high school, uh, so it's not, it's not the elementary, it's nets, you know, if you can read the paper with the, the O N epidemic, the O V epidemic, uh, it is a real concern, uh, and we have not had, we've not had any students informed or with that, but I want to wait till we have somebody that are in a deficit, because we're not prepared, should there be an opposed.
I'd only point out, in terms of the elementary, this large, policies aren't just directed at students, or visitors, and.
That's, that's correct.
You can go to an elementary school, and, and, teachers, yeah, there are adults that should, in those places, so, and, and determining where you put that, that type of, you want to consider, also your EMS people.
We had that early on, Brittany, we were off the channel, Ellen was up talking with us about that earlier in the fall, so I think we were.
We got a bit of forefront.
Yeah, we got a bit of forefront of that, so.
We've been talking about this in a number of our districts, and all of them say, Harvard and Missap are, I think we'll try to keep our kids and protect them, keep them safe.
Any further discussion on the three, uh, on the motion on the table regarding the third policy?
So, as far as the, like, trying to use policy goes, I guess what we're looking for is more or less guideline to use, not specific, to use communication, whether that is, we can accomplish control in ways that have guidelines, because that, because those better communication, communication of yours, so.
To Joe's point, John and Marcia, can, can we impose on the principles, think through this, take all the feedback, the board members, your own concerns, things that you really like, want to be followed, and come back to Dr. Pfeiffer, come back to us, and make recommend changes, structural changes possibly, or Joe's a little, is that something we can put back in? Not so much, right? Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we will vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And we have our poll numbers. Any director want to bring up, any old business? Hearing none, we move on. Any director of new business that they'd like to bring up? Would you like to make a motion, or do you want to make a question? We're gonna have a special meeting on the twenty-third, so I'll entertain a motion to approve a special board meeting on Monday, May twenty-third, at seven thirty PM in this room, for general purposes, and I'd like to direct the superintendent to advertise the meeting requirement.
All right, God.
I'll entertain the motion to just give that, all right? Is that right? Move and second. Any discussion? Very select.
Um, May twenty-third, is this required, or not?
Thank you. It's not a good one.
Thank you.
You can't disturb Kenny with that, that's, that's safer.
Is it, is it possible that we could leave at six for the executive session, come at six-thirty?
We could do anything we want, especially meetings, since it's.
As long as we have a test time.
Yeah.
We have a test time, plenty of date.
That way it doesn't directly.
Twenty-four hours in advance.
I so moved to change.
Motion at six, six thirty PM instead of seven thirty.
You're keeping it twenty-third.
Is everybody good with that? It would be a six PM exec session, six thirty PM meeting. Keeping on the pattern. Is that, does that work for everybody? Okay, so we're making the motion to keep the same date and change the start at six thirty PM, Monday, the twenty-third. Six, well, we'll, we'll confirm. Motion on the table, Monday, May twenty-third, six thirty PM in this room, general purposes, superintendent to advertise. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you for the. We'll confirm the exact session time. Any other new business from any director? Open forum, any member of the public have any open form questions for the board? None, any director or any open forum questions? All right, um, I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.